Calling the Newcastle City Council Meeting of Monday, April 17th, 2023 to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a council member on speakerphone so you start hearing noises just so you... Can I get up to the left of the agenda? Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session on Monday, April 3rd, 2023, and the public meeting of Wednesday, April 12th, 2023.
The law will approve that. What do you say?
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to swearing in of Police Officer Jacob Espizito. How have you come up over there? Aye, State District.
Aye, Jacob Espizito.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm that I will support.
And affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Yay! Congratulations. All right, any nominations for recognition? We do have a certificate of recognition for Sherri Wardin for opening her business of Serendipity Nails. Sherri. Welcome back in business again. Out of retirement?
Yes.
For the prices these days?
Yeah.
Exactly. So there you go. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And so you're back and where is your location?
It's 1112 West Main.
The old, in the old pop?
The old pop.
All right, that's what she said.
Sherri is next to me.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you, Sherri. Citizens Business and Writing, Powder River Heating and Air Conditioning, request for additional license holders. The following requested add, requested to add three license holders to their license with the city. All fees have been paid. Copies of their license, proof of insurance and bond have been provided for 2023. Paid $70 in total contractors, Powder River Heating and Air Conditioning, Journeyman HBAC Tech and Gas Tech Fitter Jose Zavala, and Journeyman H-Rec Tech Daniel Coat, H-Back Tech Apprentice Tyler Magnussen? If I can get a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the request for Powder River Heating and Air Conditioning.
No secret.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Burghol, Bruce Purges?
Already? Trying to figure out what I'm gonna say.
Just so you're aware, we do have a public hearing at 7:15, so if I have to cut you off, I may do so.
It should only take five minutes.
Okay.
I've been asked to come in front of you today by business owners on Main Street because they want to sponsor a graduation celebration event. From what I understand, got in hold of the school and it was supposed to be a, say, like a marching parade coming with the seniors on Main Street on May 19th. So we're asking for road closures on that day from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And basically it's to celebrate graduation class with a photo booth and things like this. No open container or anything, family event, you know, to have just a road closure so we can just have everybody downtown. That's basically it, except for the road closure would be from railroad to summer, Main Street, walking parade, like I said, and photo booth. And that's it.
And you have an event form filled out for... Do you have an event form filled out?
I don't think they have one. Probably not, they're not aware of it.
Okay. Just have someone stop in and pick up the form from Stacy.
Okay, I can do that, bring it in front of...
The general's has acquired a couple times, but they haven't picked it up yet.
They have acquired? Okay. They just asked me to come in and, you know, present and other people's supposed to take their other obligations, but I'll make sure that's done.
Okay.
We'll get a form filled out.
Okay, perfect. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think this sounds fun.
Sounds fun, yes.
Okay, and road closure would be okay then?
I think so.
Yeah, it'll be part of the special uniform, but I don't see a problem with it. All right, let's see if the police has a problem. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Okay, moving on to Mayor Councilmember reports, Focus.
Thank you for inviting me to come. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sandy Stevens. I am the Executive Director of Crip County Family Violence and Sexual Assault Services, and we are located in Southern Wyoming, and we service all of Crip County. I was appointed by the Focus Board of Directors about a week and a half ago to sit in as an interim director here in Weston County. And so I was asked to come and speak about our program a little bit and to reassure the folks of Weston County that we are operational. Our hours of operations are still Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:00, and we still have our 24-hour crisis line that is available to the citizens. We have a crisis advocate, her name is Rachel, and she is going to be leaving for maternity leave for a few months. And in that timeframe, my advocate, Kaylee Gold, some of you may know her. She's a resident, she grew up here in Newcastle, so she is familiar with a lot of people. You guys may be familiar with her. Weston County's not unfamiliar to myself or to Kaylee. We do the freshman impact every year with the high school, with the ninth graders. A little bit of background on myself is I worked at the Deli Abuse Foundation in 2001 through 2004, and in 2004, I applied for the director's position at Crip County Family Violence, and so I've been the director there since 2004. And in that time period, I have contracted with the Attorney General's Office, or they've contracted with me to fill in for programs when they either don't have a director or they have a new director that needs some training. I teach at the Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy three times a year to our new officers, so I'll be seeing you here in a short period of time. I had your chief go through the Challenge Academy just, what, about a month ago. He was in there for about three days in the class that I teach. Also, I have been appointed by Governor Gordon and me to some of the Department of Family Services Advisory Council, and I sit on the Wyoming Human Trafficking Council as well. So as we move forward, we're gonna see some transition, so if everyone could just be patient with us as we go through this transition period, we're gonna do the best that we can to be able to provide services five days a week. There may be some times to where no one is in the office, but rest assured that our phones will be transferred to our cellphones, and Kaylee and I will be going back and forth between both agencies. I'll oversee the administrative part of the program, and Kaylee will oversee the advocacy. Kaylee's been with me for about eight years, so you guys will be in really good hands with Kaylee. And then if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you. I can't guarantee that I'll be able to answer all the questions for you, but I could do the best that I can.
Thank you. Glad to hear that things are gonna be okay and Focus will still be available to all citizens.
Yes.
Anybody on the council have questions? I know we've had a little bit of concerns, but there's open. Well, thank you. It's nice to meet you, Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
We have Mont Bel Airport up next, and I will have to cut you off in three minutes for a public hearing.
Thank you. John Pipsy and we were asked, we got a phone call from Stacy and asked us to show up this evening, so all of us being interested, we showed up in some force.
Yeah.
So maybe you have questions for us as well?
We did. We had questions in regards to, I think you had asked for an increase in regards to your funding that you receive from the city, and I think a lot of the council members had questions as to what that would entail for the airport, the increase in funds.
There is one line item that shows an increase that would, that would cost a city $4,700 a year, and that's an increase in the wages for the airport manager, who has not had a raised increase in quite some time. It's the money that the airport manager has made historically has never, never been very flush, but we need, we're feeling we need to give the man his due and bump him up to more of a, more of a livable wage. Also, it's not lost on me, Mr. Strudger has been around for 30, 30-some odd years now, and he knows how to do the job. The board doesn't have any trouble with him at all. Mostly, he tells us what happened and how he took care of it, and we applaud it. The other thing is, as time marches on, there'll be time when he doesn't come to work anymore for whatever reason, and at that point, we don't want to come to you for some astronomical increase to try to make the job attractive to somebody. Now, that's, that's, that's one of my thoughts, but the board as a whole believes it's time to get to, to adjust his wages.
The council have any questions for the airport board?
I think you're doing all the job.
Well, thank you. I can say that. You've got to come visit.
I was up there just two weeks ago, three weeks ago, but anyway, I would, I would like to go through the new area that I, that I was there long. Well, I used to be a part of that airport for a long time, and then lately I haven't been, but I, you've got some new additions that I certainly like to see. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if there are more questions, but I have to go to a public hearing, so you could just stand by a second.
You choose what you hear.
All right, so we have a scheduled public hearing at 7:15 regarding a restaurant liquor license number seven for Cridas House Mexican Food LLC, doing business as Cridas House Mexican Food LLC, at Lot 8, Lot T, County Clerk's Edition, Newcastle, Wyoming, and Weston County. So we have a notices hereby given that on the 21st day of March, 2023, the following liquor license application was received. Protest, if there be any, may be heard against the issue of the license at 7:15 PM, Monday, April 17th, at 2023, and the Newcastle City Council Chambers at City Hall, 10 West Warwick Street, Newcastle, Wyoming. So restaurant number seven, Cridas House Mexican Food LLC, doing business as Cridas House Mexican Food LLC.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where is this?
The Old Topper, yeah, it's owned, cost from Maverick.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just did not know what that was. Well, I will accept this.
I second.
He's gonna open a new business in that building, and I'm all for that.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Do we know when that is supposed to happen?
I thought it was about to open last week, but I don't know. I don't have the, I haven't heard of it. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Did anybody have any other questions for the airport?
Can I make a point?
Yes.
Aside from the wages thing that I made a second comment on, all the other numbers are exactly the same as they were last year. All the other requests for money are exactly the same as they were last year, which is close, as we can forecast, to actual cost. So with the exception of, of the airport manager wages, it's all the same as it was last year.
Is that with the cost for the new hanger?
I'm sorry?
Is the new hanger in that as well?
No, no, no. That was what is it for last year, what we asked you for?
Okay, I was just asking.
Now, when we do the rest of the new hanger stuff, there'll be some other stuff, but right now that's not looked into.
So what does the county pay on this?
It would be...
The same as us?
Same amount, yeah. $4,795 to both the city and the county.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying the question. Moving on to Weston County In-Home Health Services.
Librarian Council, I'm Seth Parsons, I'm the In-Home Services Manager. We're here in Weston County. I believe you should have found a variety of packet information already in your mailbox that I dropped off earlier today. Would like to take the time to answer any questions over that or go through that page by page, whichever you feel. In a nutshell, what I have noticed over the last several months is that although services have not changed, we're seeing a decrease in what people are able to pay as well as what they're, because of a variety of issues, whether it be prescription increased costs, cost of living costs, fuel increased costs, as well as food costs. The extra funds that I'm requesting from the city is going to go to help offset those costs so we can continue to maintain services and expand the program to serve as many as good Weston County as we can. We completed over 37,329 miles worth of travel around Weston County, completing 2,312 visits during 2022. I've also completed personally 659 and a half hours of case management. That's the second sheet that you have in your packet. This is how I track all my case management. This was for the month of March. Every phone call, every contact, anytime I touch a file for any one of my participants gets marked down on that, so you can see what I've got, days of your times during the month and less times during the month. I also account for administration time when I'm doing other things, duties not related to any of the case management, such as trainings, meetings, or anything else related to the job. About another 3,000 or 344 and a half hours of case management between January and March. We also have increased by one full-time or one part-time CNA. I also want to note that we do split our time between Upton and Newcastle with two CNAs in Upton to cut down on travel time and miles. We bundle up our visits as well in order to cut down on that visit time. The next few pages that you'll have in your packet are how we assess the need for the program. In order to be qualified for my program, you have to be over 18 years of what age and have a need. So main thing I use is that sheet, this sheet here, that covers over activities daily living and instrumental activity daily living. If an individual does not quote-unquote score high enough or show much of a need on those things, then I do not take them on. The people that I'm interested in serving are the ones that need help to maintain their home, to complete tasks such as homemaking, bathing, or can arrest a kid and not be left home alone by themselves from the one. It is the goal of my program to help support family members, increase and maintain self-sufficiency, and prevent premature institutionalization. Any of my participants that I have will tell you that they wouldn't want to stay home for as long as possible, as long as they safely can. They need a little bit of help, and sometimes not a lot, and that's where my certified nursing assistants come in and help. The next page I have in your packet is how we assess the costs. I take their self-reported income and cross that chart and match it down with the services that they're requesting. Majority of my people that I bring on anymore are actually in that first column with as low as $4 an hour. If you're operating a business, my costs are way more than that, and that's one of the things that the funding from the city will help go to offset. If I actually charged what I would need to break even, there'd be a whole lot more than that, and I would have a lot less people served, and that's not the goal of my program. After we complete all those programs, we complete the service packet or the service plan that goes into what we will actually be doing to help them, and that gets put into the client task sheet, which is what the aides take out with them while they're out in the field, and that's what I use to track their time and their visits out there. I included a little bit of the scope of services letter as well that just talks about the policies of these, the things that they can and can't do, in case you were interested in reading something over like that. Can I answer? Any questions for the council?
So Seth, so what you do versus public health, not public health, home health, like car, I'm just saying, so...
So home health is kind of a two-forked branch. There's home health, which does include the CNAs, and we kind of share from that labor pool. Home health is the skilled nursing side of registered nurses.
So they go through you first?
We work...
Fail out all this?
We work with them. In order, if you have somebody that qualifies for home health, then Medicare picks up on those costs. Medicare does not cover what I do. Medicare will not help me with a bathing assistant. They will not help with shopping, homemaking, those type of things. So we step up in order for In-Home Services to make up those gaps that home health doesn't cover. So we're kind of two prongs of the same fork, but we work very closely together with the nurses, and we share the same labor pool of CNAs.
From, from where comes the greatest amount of your funding?
From the state of Wyoming.
To the state.
I work with Wyoming State, it's called Wyoming Home Service underneath the Community Living Section down in Chiana. That provides not even quite 40% of my yearly operating cost.
You said not even 40%?
It's, it's variable.
Now, do you go to the county commissioners and the Upton City Council as well?
I've gone to the county commissioners. I have plans to talk to the Upton City Council, and I have already met the University Legislature for my Wyoming home services program to ensure that our interest in keeping this program viable and continuing on is heard in Chiana.
You're requesting $8,000 admission? Do you need that in one big lump sum, or you...
No, we're, we're involved with the city in the past for doing quarterly installments.
Does any of the other council members have a question?
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Weston County Youth Services. Want to buy that mall?
What? Yeah, I want to buy the mall.
So we, do you want to tell a little bit about the program for some of the people that are here?
Sure. I'm Deb Swede, and I have been a juvenile probation officer for the Sheriff's Department. This, this is my 23rd year, believe it or not. It's a program that's designed mostly for first-time offenders that get in trouble with the law, and they get to come to my world. The kid has to agree, the parent has to agree, and the judge has to agree that they can come to the program for six months probation, and after a successful probation, their ticket is set aside. It's as if it never, never happened. So it's a great program that lets kids go on in their life and not be hung up in their future with citations and records and...
And I know you're doing awesome job.
Yes, yes.
But you're retiring now.
I am retiring May 31st.
Yep. What are you gonna do?
We advertised it. I, I don't think anybody's allusioning to the fact that it would be near impossible to replace her, but we've had a couple people interested, and I don't want to put their names out there for obvious reasons, but one of them I think would be shockingly close. So we'll see, but we did advertise it. I've got one resident man and one other interested.
So it would definitely still be there when you're retired?
And I will still volunteer to help the PD, the Sheriff's Office, and the school.
Are you gonna train a new lady to, or a person?
Yeah.
Sure.
You know, there's, there's some things Deb does that cannot be trained on. Her ability to connect with those kids is, is very rare to the way she, to the level she does. And I, you know, we've always been really proud of this program as a city, as a community and everything, because all around the state, there are programs like it out there that cost three, four times as much and have nowhere near the success rate. We used to actually deal with the district court kids too. The problem becomes now that those, those placement facilities, or the placement facilities for the...
The problem becomes now that those placement facilities for the juveniles are only for district court-type crimes, you know, the bigger crimes, and so they're very limited in what they'll pay for those juveniles. So we have two options, take the juvenile potentially to the jail, a juvenile detention facility, or do an actual supervised probation program through this. That's what makes it very successful. She holds groups weekly?
Every week, we have a group on Wednesday night.
They do random drug analysis, they do, they support the proms, they're there with, alongside me, that's breastmashing, those kinds of things.
We provide free prom dresses for girls, and we have free years. We actually have some men's suits now, so if some guy needs a suit, we can help out as well.
So that reaches further than somebody that's just in the system situation?
We do community service. We just add a fund drive for the Humane Society and gather tons of blankets for them if they needed. That also really does affect the kids, and it makes them feel like they're contributing to the community, and so that was good. They'll all still be in town.
Be different, though, right?
I've seen you doing your thing, and it's just amazing, especially with the, I guess, filling a void in their life at some levels, so.
We do have kids that, believe it or not, feel that group is their family, and they don't, they're not ready to get off probation. A lot of kids still come to group after they are off.
That's cool.
Family forum. And I sure thank you guys for funding us all these years, and hope that can continue with whoever, the new person that listens.
Well, we thank you for clarifying, because, you know, we're bill.
Oh, yes.
So we figured we would ask the ones that would know.
Well, we didn't want to jump right out there yet, because I was hoping if you change your mind, so when we jump out here like this, that makes it a done deal, we didn't want to do that right away. It's tough.
Well, we do appreciate you more than you probably won't know. But thank you very much for your service to our youth in Newcastle.
I'll probably still hang out in high school.
And I'm sure they'll be more than happy to let you. Well, thank you very much, Seth.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And we might do something for it, I'll let you know.
Yes, please do.
Send me to Afghanistan.
Any questions for them? All right, moving on to old business, candidate annexation ordinance number one, series two thousand twenty-three, which heading reads, "Annuendo Territory Described in Petition for Annexation, dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three."
That was your son. And that was from baseball. My God. That was just wonderful video. That's the first time I can remember it, that's baseball.
I made a motion that we pass work on number one, series twenty-three.
Caught him. No. I'll say that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All of the co-signs, aye? Okay, second reading passed on the seventeenth of April. Department ten reports, City Clerk treasures, Casey.
I have a letter in your packets from the Volunteers of America. That is the company that took over for Northern Wyoming Mental Health. I did have a difficult time getting Anna Edwards to email me the information, which just happened after the last email, and finally received a letter for, from her on April fourth. But in this letter, she was requesting the funds that have not been paid thus far this fiscal year. So I just wanted to have a consensus of the council to go ahead and pay for the first, second, and third quarter in our fiscal year.
Who's there? When the mayor, I make a motion that we pay the funds. We need to talk, right?
And we, the council voted?
I mean, we have to get into whatever.
It is in the budget, so I guess I'm not sure that we require a motion. I just wanted a consensus that everyone would be okay to go ahead and disperse those funds since it's, we haven't dispersed it yet.
Was there a reason?
I, we didn't have any information who to send them to.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
They took over for Northern Wyoming Mental-
Okay. I understand. I'm okay with that. Yeah, agreed. Yeah.
And then I also sent emails out, and there's the proposal for the website, a new website build. That's what you guys would like to think of it. I don't know if any of you use our website very often. I've worked with our website.
Yeah, I went through my name, Tom.
It should be on there, Tom. It should be.
There was, there was stuff that was out, oh, sorry, Todd, go ahead.
Our website isn't great the way that it is right now?
That's correct, it is outdated. Mike Moore, when he was here, was the one that was updating it and whatnot. I know that we talked, and you spoke with them, was able to get in and do some-
They actually made the changes for our-
Council.
Yeah, the councils and the county.
And we're with the police department, updated, and all that.
I don't know that they have any police departments updated as of yet. We can definitely get that done. With this proposal, though, obviously, I don't believe our websites are using suddenly, personally. With this proposal, it is a billed fee of almost like-
Forty-nine million dollars.
Yeah, almost five thousand dollars. And then the website hosting per month would be the, be seventy dollars.
What do we pay now?
Right now, it varies, because every time we make a change, it's, costs money between thirty-five to seventy dollars.
Do they send people, Stacy?
No.
No.
And is it monthly, is there a monthly fee as well?
Just the monthly hosting fee. Anything that needs changed, this will include training for us to be able to make those changes ourselves, or they will make them as well with this seventy dollars per month.
Okay, so there's no additional charge over the sixteen dollars?
No.
Is this something that we should put up for a bid?
Sorry, no, it's only five dollars.
Okay, I'm at, the reason I'm asking, too, is we have a person in town on Main Street that does this for a living, too, and that's Jen Woolman. And that, do, would we want to ask her if she'd like to talk to us about it, or just?
I don't see why not either.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the website is rather difficult to navigate.
It is.
I use it quite frequently, and I think this would be a smart move to move to something more user-friendly, as Stacy said, so.
No, I agree.
Do you know who built the website?
American Business Solutions.
Yeah.
A company out of Washington or Oregon.
Wonderful.
So I don't know how we ended up with them to begin with, but-
I'd like to have it more local, and I think, you know, we got, this is from Brittany, this is from Fall.
Yeah, yeah.
So we got Brittany, who did this up for us, and where is she at?
They were out of Colorado.
Colorado. So, I mean, I like their stuff, for sure, but I also would like to maybe try a local business and try to keep it local.
We do actually have an employee that does this, used to do this for a living. I don't know if you're interested or not. Scott Thompson works for me.
Who is it?
Scott Thompson.
Oh, uh-huh.
He works, works for us. He was looking kind of, looking to get out of more desk work and more into physical work, so he came to work for me, so.
He might want to go back to the desk work.
Well, he might be an employee for part of the desk work.
Well, that should be certainly something we should ask him about.
Well, I think we should ask him and ask Sage Brush Marketing, because that's what Jen says.
Would you like me to go and talk to Jen Woolman about this, or would you like to?
I can contact her.
I guess you stay with Stacy. No, I would stay.
No, I think Tom doesn't really do either.
Tom doesn't really do either.
You don't have anything to do, so.
But I'd like to try to keep it local, as local as possible. I do like the proposal, though, that Brittany sent.
I think having a better website will provide better voice, too.
By the way, the proposal she sent us is excellent class. We just went through a couple of these, one to the Republican Party and one to the Arts Council, and this is-
I looked at Douglas's website, and I guess they do it for them, too, and it was, it was easy to navigate.
He wrote the numbers out, is what I said.
Sage Brush Marketing does it for them?
No, this-
The same?
Yeah, they're all in this.
Oh, okay.
Douglas.
That's all I have. Any questions for Sage Clerk? Okay, Public Works Supervisor, Bravestown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Outside of the reports, I did have a request late last week. The Broken Sprockets, I believe, work on the Find the Trails up at, up north on eighty-five.
Ben Sprockets.
Ben Sprockets, sorry. We sponsor those trails, and we actually paid a lot of money to fund those trails. They are requesting a portable toilet. You can put up there six months of the year, May through October. Currently, we pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month for portable toilets, so you're looking at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars per year. I was wanting to know the council's pleasure on this, so I know whether that one had to put up there or not.
How often do they use in the winter?
We would pull it in October. It would be removed in October, through, through the month of April, and put back up there in May. It's just what they're requesting.
Is the one that was at Railroad Park, was that ours?
Yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah, we pulled it, because it was used. So we pulled that one in Girl Scout Park. Temporarily put ones up at Dow Park, Centennial Park, the baseball fields and the soccer fields, until we opened the bathrooms up again. The only permanent one we have is Cemetery in Washington Park currently.
What is the name, how much per year did you say?
Fifteen hundred dollars a year, is what it would be.
Two fifty a month?
Two fifty a month.
So you said six months, though, right?
Yes.
For six months? For six months, it would be that much?
Yes.
Well, what do you think? That's, that is a draw to our city, and I know this, that the Ben Sprockets goes out there and tells people about our trails.
Are they getting ready to do something there, like for a, like a run or a-
I'm not sure.
That was the rapid, like, thing that Teresa came in with.
This is a permanent trail system.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Owens.
Has there been some kind of public outcry, or is it just like wandering individuals asking for the water bodies?
They have the same problem we did at Washington Park with no place to go, so people kind of went where they went, decided to. That's what they're looking to do, is curb some of that, that unnecessary waste, I guess, alongside the trails.
Okay, so is it, it's a problem, it's not an identified problem, that people are curious about the tracks of the trails?
According to the one person that contacted me with Ben Sprockets, or, yes.
Well, my question is, is that it's such a wide area, I mean, if they're all the way on the other side.
They're gonna have to walk away, is there?
That's why I'm asking the council's pleasure.
Do we have one at Serenity Trail? I don't think we should do it.
This is a lot longer. I mean, this trail is a lot. But like you say, it could be at this, if they're over there.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, it's not feasible for me, I guess.
Can I say something on this, as far as the traffic commission? Is that they've come to us also for funding requests, and we are in the midst of publishing a lot of maps, a lot of brochures that are going to be circled throughout South Dakota and Wyoming, all right? So we expect traffic to really pick up, because we're going to promote hiking within Weston County. So we expect those trails to really pick up this year with more people, you know, and with the advertising that we've got planned. Something like this, I think is needed, but as far as, you know, what the city can provide is one thing, and as far as what funding is available is another thing. So I'm just saying that you can expect more traffic this year than what they've had in the previous years.
The only thing that I'm saying that we can do to alleviate what Pam said, the mayor said, is put it where it is, and so they could kind of plan. You know what I mean?
You mean one of the jails?
That's three thousand a year.
No, but I'm just saying, there is a rest, there is a-
Because probably the truck's setting inside of that.
What's that?
You would have to put it at the entrance, because otherwise, how's the truck gonna get in there to empty it?
Yes, it would have to be.
That's what I'm saying, one of the jails.
Yeah.
The truck can't get to the other end, so there's no route.
Yeah, it's too dense.
Let's see, Sarah.
So that's kind of in Newcastle, new destination for hiking. So the human extre- might turn people off of the trails, so having a water body available so that people can evacuate that stuff before they go off the trails might be, you know, benefit to the city.
And you said-
But we have nice clean trails.
And you said that you've already removed a couple from around town, or you just re-?
Yes, no, we tried them at all the parks. The ones that weren't used, we have removed. So we do have money in the budget for this. We had basically six thousand dollars that we removed already, so we do have-
So we could try it at the entrance of the, of that trail.
I agree, I don't think we should have that going on up there. If that'll come back on it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I've been hiking trails from South Dakota, I've been the Serenity Trails here in Wyoming, Hills Canyon, Montana, Hawaii. None of the trails that I've ever hiked on have water bodies at these locations. Did you, did you ever stop at any human extre- that's what you said? None, none that I've seen. You know, that doesn't mean that they might go off the trail on our yard or so. There's nothing on the trail that, you know, there have been pretty long trails used up in big mountainous, public trails up in there that we've been on. There's a lot of people that hike that stuff up at, at Montana Glacier Park. Been a lot of trails that we've hiked on, and people in and out of that full area, and you don't see that stuff on the side of the trail. No services. No services at the entrance of the trails.
Okay.
I mean, this is something that we could probably monitor if we did try it. Um, if the porta potties aren't being used that frequently, then we could probably have a plan.
Well, I'm not gonna look to see.
And that's basically what we've done with the, the portable toilets we've had around town, is we've monitored them for the last year, two years, and the ones that weren't used, we pulled this year.
Well, let's, I guess if we have the budget and we already took some away.
Right.
Let's try it and see if it's worth watching. I don't know, that's my opinion.
Well, Your Honor, I move that we put a porta potty up there on a temporary, or test basis, uh, th- this summer from, uh, what, what'd they want?
May through October. Yeah, October.
Okay, well, let's check it in May through, May, June, July. Let's check it the first of August and see what it's doing, and then pull it if we don't like it. What do you think?
We better check it before then. I would wait till after, just.
That's like, August is your peak.
Well, that's my August is.
Tourist season.
My August is.
Peak tourist season.
Okay.
Is that, is that gonna be by the highway?
Well, that's where the parking lot is, that approach.
Oh, well, you're gonna have everybody in the doggy.
It will be up off the highway and wait to the parking lot, past the defense line.
Well, if anybody's gonna buy it, we see if they're gonna be.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay.
Okay. The next thing I would like to ask the council, um, requesting we put out for bid asphalt recycler. Uh, we, I was looking at this for this budget. We had budgeted for it last year, but some of the money was spent. We did, with Stacy's incredible help. We found a way to pay for it this year. It would help budget out for next year. The one we demoed could potentially save the state some money on asphalt. We spent around ninety-nine dollars a ton about, in asphalt to get it back, to get asphalt to Newcastle to patch our streets. This thing has the potential of spending twenty dollars a ton instead of ninety-nine dollars a ton to be able to repair streets.
I'm for it, but it's. Anything?
Oh, uh, thank you. Uh, is, is this a possibility that there's something like this could become a revenue source for the city of Newcastle? And we could do it for Upton and send it?
Uh, not really, it's not that big a unit. We're looking at primarily patching. Uh, to get into something like that would be, I have no idea what it would cost. Uh, this unit costs, the one we demoed cost a hundred and five thousand. So we're looking at spending around that range of money. Um, this unit we're looking at produces six tons per hour. The unit you're talking about would have to produce twenty to thirty to forty tons an hour. Um, you're talking a pub mill, heating unit, asphalt injection system. You're, you're talking half a million to a million dollar investment.
Oh, wow.
So, we're, we're looking at patching streets, not building them, so.
I'm, I'm all for you to take the lead on that.
So, how long will it take, uh, for the asphalt recycler to pay for itself?
Between a year, a year and a half.
Wow.
We spent ninety thousand dollars last year on asphalt. We could cut that back down to, say, fifteen thousand dollars this year. Uh, so inside of two years, we would actually pay for the unit.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm all for it personally, uh, I think that any new technology that like save costs, um, would, would be definitely something for.
I'm definitely for it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go with it. As far as the reports, any other questions?
Any questions on the reports, uh, Stephen and Owen?
You want to dispatch? I'm gonna dispatch.
Okay. Any other questions for? Thank you. Uh, moving on to Police Chief, uh, Holes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first I apologize, I do not have the correct numbers for our, uh, the dispatch for this last, um, timeframe. Um, I think really the only thing I have is, we're looking to have everything moved, um, by the first of the month, out of the old PD into the new PD. So, as soon as we get a server hooked up, we'll be moving the, uh, remaining office equipment over.
And they have training this week?
The dispatches do have training this week, uh, tomorrow and, and Wednesday, um, and then they'll be, they'll be ready to go, so.
Okay. Um, and we, uh, the chief and I spoke about, um, uh, the dispatch and the dispatch, uh, issue regarding two dis- dispatches. And I spoke with Stacy, and I think we might have a proposal for the commissioners, um, if the council wishes to move forward. Um, the proposal is, um, that there is an advisory board of five. It would be the two chiefs and the sheriff, and then two appointed, um, citizens, um, to that advisory board. Um, talked with Stacy in regards to the concern that the commissioners had about, um, the equipment, and we looked at, um, what it would cost us to pay for half that equipment, um, and to have it utilized at the police department. Um, so that takes away the, the issue with, um, who owns the equipment. We could have a agreement made there. And then we, uh, we still have it over at the PD, the new PD, so it won't be at the law enforcement center. Um, it would still be under the city and still city employees.
So now is this instead, you've already met the meeting that you were gonna have, this is it?
No, that's Wednesday.
The meeting, uh, Wednesday.
So you're gonna talk about this then?
Correct.
This is what you're proposing?
Yeah, what we're proposing is that, um, you know, depending, I mean, they still have to work on contracts, you know, uh, the town of Upton, um, the sheriff's department and the city. So, but we still need to talk about contracts and everybody have their teeth in the air, um, and have the, that comfort there. But, uh, it would be, you know, um, with the concern of who owns the equipment, we pay our part. Um, it doesn't have to be a one lump sum, we can do payments, which so it doesn't kill our budget or the police department's budget, or even work on services.
So that when you say we pay our part, are we paying monthly, or we pay whatever?
Well, that would be something if the, if the commissioners meet tomorrow, and if they decide that they wanna go that route, um, that's some details we can, we can work out. But, um, but the chief and I spoke, and Stacy and I spoke, and, um, they would definitely put us at one dispatch for our county, which two is not needed. Um, it shows that, you know.
That was not a design.
Yeah. Um, I still think that, um, it should be at the PD. The dispatch center should be at the PD. Um, and then, you know, we have those contracts in place for everybody and everybody that have. I mean, obviously not, there's gonna be things that make each entity happy, and there's gonna be things that make each entity unhappy.
So when you say.
We gotta compromise and we gotta.
Yeah, absolutely, but you know when that happens.
Yeah.
So when you say two citizens, what does that mean?
Um, it, well, my idea, and like I said, I, it's, this is just being thought out there, is we would have two from the council, two from the commissioners, and two from Upton to interview and appoint the two other members to the advisory board of five.
So what, you put it out for people that are interested type thing?
Yeah, and then, um, if, if Upton agrees, they would send, I don't know where they would wanna do it, um, but both two from Upton, two from Hammer, and two from the commissioners could interview and appoint those other two, um, community members to that advisory board.
When you say pay half of the money that?
They paid seven hundred and eighty-six something change, or eight, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand something. So, um, we could do half of that, like we were gonna do way in the beginning. Um, or, you know, um, just so, because that seemed to be a big concern.
Where, where would we get the money?
We, uh, Stacy looked at the budget, obviously it's not this fiscal year, it'd have to be the next fiscal year.
Or next, to there.
Yeah, um, and we wanna avoid using cash reserves. So it would be, um, you know, maybe three different payments, uh, whatever can kind of work out. It could be, um, instead of charging them their thirty-seven percent a month for usage, we could say, hey, you know, you're used to paying forty-five hundred, we could write off the other amount. It, it just depends on if the commissioners are for it and if, if they wanna go that route. We, they, we would have to work out those people.
What I like to say about that is that every dime they spent on that came from the federal government.
It was arm of those.
Okay, and so I think there should be a stipulation in any agreement that we make that when and if the city is able to get similar sorts of funds, that we would happily give them half, um, for their money. I don't, I don't think we should be spending the money we're getting from the state in taxes or for the people in Weston County. I think we should be able to go out and look and find a, a donation, a, a grant.
We can do that in the process.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that, that's the money to get, not commit to any other money.
And what if we never get any other money?
Well, that's, is a problem.
So, so what I say is we figure out, um, a payment plan or whichever with the commissioners, and then if we find that grant, then we can do it that route. But if we don't find a grant or the money is elsewhere, um, we're gonna have to do something. I mean, we gotta compromise one way or another.
Okay.
And, and make sure that our citizens are only paying for one dispatch.
So, you and chief and the sheriff have met, I mean.
No.
So the sheriff's not in on this?
The sheriff, and, uh, we have not, not discussed with the sheriff. Um, I did meet with, um, Commissioner Taylor, who is aware of what I was going to talk to the council about, and he was going to take it to the commissioners meeting tomorrow. I do gotta say though, just so you guys are all aware, if this is in next year's budget as of right now, it's gonna not look good, it would have to come out of reserves. There, I do not see money in the next year's budget to do this.
That's.
So just need to make you guys aware of that. And that's when, just out of the chief and I talked about maybe, you know, cause their percentage would be thirty-seven percent, and we could work something out where some of that money comes out of, uh, their service fees monthly. And that would be ideal.
Madam Mayor, what if we agreed to a five-year deal that we, we would get their three hundred and fifty thousand for them, or whatever it is, and, and then we've got five years to set aside, or, you know, to build this up?
Well, like I said first off, the commissioners would have to motion and vote for it.
Of course.
And I think we could probably sit and negotiate that aspect of it.
I think we have to agree if, if the city's gonna pay half, and then we can negotiate on the terms of, of the payment.
Yeah.
So if we're, if we're in one together, we're in a dispatch together, you know, the, the county will have to pay their portion of dispatch fees, just like everybody else does, we all put in. Um, and if they can take that, you know, if they can take that away and put that towards our bill.
That sounds good to me, I, I agree.
Um, but that's something I wanted to propose. I, I did a lot of thinking after, um, our town hall meeting, made a lot of phone calls to, um, other entities. Um, I'm pretty sure that, uh, the roundabout figure that, um, that the sheriff did, uh, stayed that he could be close to to run dispatch was, um, pretty much quoted of other entities that only run dispatch for sheriff's department, uh, not a police department, rather than two. Um, so, um, and, you know, there's, and I know that, um, you know, I can't speak for the whole commissioner board, but just from speaking with, um, Commissioner Taylor, he, he worked on some math, and he knows that it's gonna be one in three hundred and eighty.
Yes.
I have a question. Um, I know at the beginning of all this discussion with, uh, dispatch, is that it was brought up that, you know, a percentage of the calls were city, a percentage of the calls were county, a percentage of the calls were Upton, and it was brought about to, you know, each community should pay their fair share? Okay, now, has that been pretty well gone by the wayside to negotiate on who's paying for what? Or is it still, you know, everybody gonna be paying their fair share?
Um, it will still probably go by percentage, um, you know, cause we, the, the city does have the majority of the calls for service. Um, we're still getting numbers put together, even if you combine, um, the county with the town of Upton. Um, I think the city still has the majority of calls for service. Um, that's not including the ambulance and fire and, and those entities. Um, but I, I think, you know, that's always been the talk was the, the percentages, um, which was the thirteen, thirty-seven, and the fifty. Um, and I think that's, that really does work out kind of being the fair way. Now, if it was a joint powers board, I would say it would need to be thirty-three, 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 maybe seventy, thirty-four.
Well, I, I don't believe you guys are doing the joint powers board. That's where, uh, from reading and everything.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, still, does it, does it work out advantageously for everybody? That's the whole thing.
If it, if the, they get together and they work on their contracts, um, I think once they all have their teeth in the contracts, it will work out. Um, but, I mean, we don't know until we do it.
Yeah.
So.
It's still a disc- discussion, it's all, yeah.
And, and we're trying to make it, I mean, I am, I'm trying to make it as fair to everybody as we can. There's, there's no reason, we have to get to an agreement. And so there's gonna be things that, that maybe the city doesn't like, or the county doesn't like. We, we have to, we have to say, you know what, hey, we have to put our, uh, pride aside, and we have to do what's best for our citizens.
Yeah, I understand the concept, negotiation, you know, you gotta get a little to get a little, and, and it works out for everybody at the end. And that's what I'm hoping happens, that's why I was just asking these questions.
That was my.
Sounds good, Pam.
That was my call, and if, if the, I would just, um, say that, you know, we wouldn't need to make a motion on it, so then we have it already in place and ready to go. Um, so if the commissioners do need.
So we make a motion tonight?
We would need to make a motion to, that we're okay with this route, going this route, and that, um, commissioners need tomorrow, and they may, I mean, they could still say no. I mean, I have, I can't speak for the commissioners.
So Commissioner Taylor's gonna propose this tomorrow?
Yes, I just have to.
Is?
I told, uh, what?
Is that what the plan is?
Well, I have to let him know what our proposal was, um, because, you know, I, I had this idea, but everybody else could put in their two cents and change things. But then, um, then I would let him know that we did make a motion on it, and it passed, and he could make a motion at the commissioners' meeting, and it could be voted for or against. I mean, I can't speak for them.
So I move to go along with your proposal.
So, I move to go along with your proposal. Uh, I'd like to put one thing in there, so long as we do not have to spend our reserves to do it. I think we should have the five-year, at least five years to get the money to set aside. And that part needs to be negotiated as he said. But yes, your proposal is wonderful. And to get an agreement is wonderful, but not to spend our reserves to do it.
Well, I don't think, we don't want to hurt their budget and they don't, and from my understanding, you know, Commissioner Taylor doesn't want us to cut ours. Um, so the payments need to be made. Um, it's understandable. He's by Commissioner Taylor. Um, but, uh, I mean, we have to be prepared if we don't get extra funding from anywhere.
Well, uh, but that's why we can put it aside year by year if we extend it long enough to do that. And she's asked to come up with the number for that.
Well, I think we can make a motion and then he can negotiate if the commissioners go that route.
Okay. Well, I, I, I move that anyway, so. Did you, did you second it?
No.
Okay. Well.
Well, I don't know whether I want to put that stipulation on here, Tom.
No.
Oh. Well, you, you think it's okay to spend our reserve?
Well, I think sometimes don't you have to spend your, your reserve at home if you, and then you pay that back?
Yeah, we, we, we'll just pretend Americans call it for discussion, of course.
I'm discussing. I don't, I don't, my proposal doesn't have that stipulation in it. I think that, you know, we need to have the, um, first, we need to see if the county commissioners are going to go forward.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? So, I, um, I think that, uh, we need to make the motion to, or, you know, to go ahead and state that this is our proposal. And then the, the chief, the sheriff, and, um, and the attorneys could.
I would draw my stipulation from your proposal and you go ahead with it with my motion to do the proposal as suggested by the mayor.
Any other? Okay.
I heard an amended motion, uh, amended motion, so I, I second the amended motion.
Okay. Any further, we have a motion, a remotion, and a second, any further discussions?
Um, I think that we need to do something. So, I, I feel like this is a positive step, um, in the negotiation process. Uh, so, I, I hope that the commissioners can do something with it. Because I, I'm really not a fan of the, uh, two dispatch idea at all. I think we only need one dispatch. And, uh, along with what Tom was saying, uh, I'm not a big fan of us dipping your dollar reserves. Um, but if that's what it takes to get something done with this dispatch situation, then, um, I'm not opposed to it either.
Okay. So, that's how I, that's how I feel. I mean, no one wants to get into their state's account. But then we pay that back. I agree. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passed. That was all I wanted to bring under the police department. Do you have any questions? Okay. All right, and moving on to, um, City Attorney, double N.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, just some housekeeping first off, and just so everyone is apprised of the situation. Obviously, Mark Hughes and I represent the city of Upton as well as the city of Newcastle. Um, that creates somewhat of a conflict in term of, in terms of the ethics board of the bar association, as you probably would assume. Um, so, we sent out, and I don't know if that was sent to, more or less sent it out to Stacy, I believe an email you have.
Originals.
Okay, perfect. Um, basically what that does, counsel, is it allows me to represent the city of Newcastle, um, solely, while Mark Hughes would represent the city of Upton solely in the negotiation process. Um, signing said waiver would basically give me the authority to negotiate on behalf of the city of Newcastle.
Um, I can read that letter. It's, um, from Hughes Law Office. Dear Counsel, our office has contacted the bar association ethics board concerning our representation of the town of Upton and the city of Newcastle in the upcoming dispatch negotiations. We have been told so long as the town and city waive any conflict, that our office can duly support the town of Upton and city of Newcastle. However, if the council has issue or is uncomfortable with this agreement, we will have to find outside representation for this negotiation. This letter serves as a rejection or acceptance of the conflict waiver. If the council agrees to waive the conflict, please have the mayor sign below. Do we have a motion to, um, waive the conflict of interest?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same time? Okay. Do we only send both of these? Because there's two. One was for our copy.
Seeing that we have a proposal on the table, um, I do have to inform the council that the county attorney's office proposed having mediation, uh, for this negotiation. Now, um, it would have been Craig Silva's office at the time. Um, I believe the cost for each party is two thousand dollars. Um, but obviously, this proposal changes that situation. They're going to want to be able to see this before we obviously enter into a two thousand dollar contract with another attorney.
Well, I thought during, um, that town hall meeting, uh, we said no to the mediation because we, uh, we were told by both Danny Stone and you that you guys were okay with working with the two chiefs and the sheriff.
Well, I was fine with that. I thought that was the, that was the plan. But it was the next day that we were basically told that, um, Craig Silva could do a mediation. Um, the problem with that, I guess, is, is that we have this proposal on the table now. And so, obviously, we would need to see what the county wants to do next.
I just don't want to keep spending money.
Yeah.
So, um, but I guess we'll have to, to leave.
One more thing, just housekeeping wise. I would need a motion in terms of, um, just basically vesting the power and need to negotiate on behalf of the city for the negotiations, at least in terms of the proposal that we're given, if we end up negotiating on Wednesday. They could accept the proposal tomorrow, so.
I would say, um, when it comes to the negotiation of money, I would, I would be more comfortable if Stacy was there or since she knows our budget.
Okay, um, just to clarify, I'm not, I wouldn't be able to just elaborate choose mediation, but.
I know. I know. But it would be nice to have.
Okay.
Have that along with the chief. And I'm sure they'll probably want to do the same on, on their.
I think so, probably. Um, I think that is, I think that's it with the proposal. I think that clears everything up. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Any questions for City Attorney? Any standing committee reports? Any other business? Can I get a, uh, motion to leave regular session to enter into executive session regarding litigation, uh, going with statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I? So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, um, leaving regular session at eight eighteen. Thank you.